Hello, I would like to call to order a special school committee meeting on June 30th, 2022 at 4:30 PM. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Parsons, if you'd lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to just do our usual announcement. On June 30th, the June 30th, 2022 special school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on the Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or youtube.com/tuksburytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording today's meeting to please identify themselves. Seeing nobody in our audience today, I'll move forward. We're going to enter into executive session. This is a non-public session to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel. The Assistant Superintendent, the school committee will reconvene the special school committee meeting following executive session. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with the Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, roll call. Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Bea'roni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well, so we will now enter executive session at 4:34.
I would like to reconvene the special school committee meeting at 5:09 PM. And I'd like to begin by asking Mrs. Regan to speak with us about her recommendation for assistant superintendent.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the committee. Let me first just do a brief overview of the process that we had for our assistant superintendent search. As you know, we posted the position in late May. The position closed June 3rd. We combed through a little over 20 applications to come up with six highly qualified applicants to interview. We had an interview team of 11 stakeholders, including myself, Ms. Kayla Bea Joni Smith, we had two principals, three teachers, two parents, our district director of student and family support, and our district business manager. We conducted interviews on June 16th and June 18th. Again, thank you to that team because that was a Saturday long afternoon for everybody, a Thursday night and a Saturday afternoon. I'm pleased to tell you that Ms. Lori McDermott was chosen unanimously through that process as our strongest applicant finalist. We subsequently invited Ms. McDermott to meet with members of our district leadership team, including yourself, madam chair, again, business manager David Libby, director of STEM and IT Jason Stamp, director of student service and special ed Mr. Pelletier, and myself. We ran through some further questions and a scenario analysis with Ms. McDermott. And again, unanimously, she was considered as the strongest candidate to be recommended for the position of assistant superintendent. So let me tell you a little bit about Lori McDermott. Lori has 27 years of educational experience as a teacher, as a reading interventionist of both early childhood and elementary ed, as a district level director, K through 12 literacy director, and as assistant principal and principal in various schools throughout Chelmsford and Westford. Other experiences Lori has had is in curriculum development, grant programming, and evaluating and supervising staff and members of our own administrative team. Moreover, it's the parent, staff, and district leadership references that really tell you the story of who Lori is. Some of the comments about Lori say that she is a highly effective and capable educational leader. She is an engaging and friendly leader who possesses strong communication skills. She's a tireless worker. She is calm, thoughtful, and caring in the way she leads her staff. She puts students first and supports her staff to do just that. And her staff, students, and families love her and will miss her terribly. Often said was Westford's loss will certainly be Tewksbury's gain. Madam chairman and members of the committee, I'd like to recommend that we hire Ms. Lori McDermott as our next assistant superintendent of schools starting July 1st, 2022. That's tomorrow.
Okay. Well, that's quick.
It has been quick.
Yeah.
But it's been quality, I would say, a quality experience. And we certainly garnered a wonderful assistant superintendent I'm recommending to you today.
Okay. So I open it to comments.
She has 27.
And dedicated their time, certainly my colleague, Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, and everyone else that was involved in that process. There's a lot going on in Tewksbury. I think it's a very exciting time. I've heard about Mrs. McDermott. I'm very excited. And certainly, I wholeheartedly support Mrs. Regan's decision. And I hope my committee members do as well. So that's all I wanted to say.
Any thoughts, Mr. Parsons?
I have none.
Okay.
Yeah, no further comments. I think my colleague, Mr. Sullivan, hit the nail right on the head.
No, no additional comments as well. All right. So at this time, I'll do a roll call vote. And Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Well, I'll make that motion to accept Ms. Regan's recommendation on the hiring and the contract approval of Ms. McDermott as assistant superintendent.
I'm second.
Okay. And all in favor, Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bea Joni Smith, do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons, do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Sullivan, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So that passes unanimously. And Mrs. McDermott, I'd like to say welcome. And I know that we're thrilled with the level of interest that there was for Tewksbury and in this position. So I really enjoyed meeting you, and I look forward to some of the work that we're going to do. I think that you have some great ideas, and you've done some good things already with teaching and learning. So I'm excited for Tewksbury. I would also like to, on behalf of the committee and Mrs. Regan, say thank you and a deep appreciation to Westford superintendent Chris Chu and the assistant superintendent Carrie Cleary for their collaboration and willingness to work with Mrs. Regan with all of our tight timeline that we had to onboard Lori so quickly to Tewksbury Public Schools. And I would like to open the opportunity to you if you would like to say a couple things.
Come right over here. I'm going to let you sit. Typically, we'd be sitting right next to me.
Thank you. I'm thrilled, thrilled to be here. It's been an emotional roller coaster of a day as I shut down the elementary school in Westford and said some bye, said goodbyes to some folks. And I very much appreciate how quickly you were able to pull this together because I know, you know, obviously, I want to take care of the district that I'm leaving as much as I want to be here. So it was nice that they were able to work it out so that we could pull this together so quickly. I also very much appreciated the really thoughtful process. I also noticed the Saturday, which was wonderful because that was a convenient time at such a busy time of the year for candidates. It was, it was a wonderful offering. And to see such a large group of dedicated people around the table and the way the conversation went, I just, I've never been in a lot of interviews in 27 years, and I've never felt such a positive, warm, welcoming feeling that actually did pull me away from a district that I'm extremely happy to be working at and great, so grateful for that experience. And then moving on as a finalist, and again, a whole nother, very, very thorough process with even different stakeholders. It was just wonderful. So I'm thrilled to bring my love of teaching and learning here to Tewksbury and help to collaborate with the leadership team to continue to move the district forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you.
So at this time, I don't have any more business. Is there anything else on the committee?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's special school committee meeting.
Okay.
Second that.
And all in favor, Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Aye as well.
And the chair votes aye as well. And we convene at 5:16 PM.